So, the only thing on this is that it says.
Alright, six o'clock, please rise for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alright, also, we're gonna read our mission statement in partnership with communities. The mission of the Delaware County School District is to educate individuals in an American address and respect so they become self-aware and responsible by long-term learners. Alright, um, roll call here. We have all our members here except Amy Johnson was not able to attend this evening, which she notified us all of. Others present tonight, we have our superintendent, Enstead with us, Principal LaPard, Principal O'Keefe, and our new assistant principal, Ken 100%, as well as guests in the audience. We have, or we have changes to the agenda, Sharon?
Uh, we don't, we just have a few items again under me, cause you know, that's the deal with that and other things. So if you wanna add that down, you can. Uh, I guess if we wanna go, so balance questions down. We do have vehicles that we've talked about that we're hoping for. And then also, I just wanna address quickly, it did have my first place country club, but we didn't pay with our superintendent, so I'll tell you what data on that. And then questions.
Okay, okay, so, um, we'll have E, F, and then questions when we move on to G. And Brooke, you got that? Thank you. Alright, we have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Follow.
Motion, I propose there a second.
Second.
Second by Brittany, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Alright, sorry, can you have Brooke's on here if you have a sheet? Okay, so we do have some, a couple people that wanna speak tonight. We're gonna start with, um, our Ed Minnesota DGF. Are you gonna be speaking, Fiona?
Yeah, I know I didn't bring a desk up here.
Oh, yeah, nope, nope, you're fine, you're fine. I'm just gonna start my timer here, so you have five minutes, here you go.
All you guys.
Cause I tried to find my guest, but the computer's not working.
Um, myself and Brandon Gerlach are the co-presidents of Education Minnesota DGF, and we've had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Enstead three times in the last over month that he's officially been here. So we just kinda wanted to give you a recap of some of the things we covered and how that's been going. Um, the first time we met was July 7th, we talked about houses and cleaning of the building, the new finance company moving in, uh, there was a payment issue with the music department that got taken care of, the prep time issue got resolved on that meeting as well, and then talking about even plan for the new offering. Uh, so that we can, we can just run it once a month, Brandon and myself, to kinda talk about issues, they don't fall on the huge things, or hey, let's talk about it three months after it happened, to stay on the top, stay on topic, so that's helpful. Um, we talked about staff morale, things we can do to boost it, uh, met again on July 12th. Uh, one of the things we decided was that EMDGF will be providing, and you are all welcome to attend as well. A lunch on August 24th for all staff, members of the district from 11 to 12 workshops. We're gonna have lunch on the basketball court over there, this is the only place where we can all fit, so that's where we're gonna meet, so you are all welcome to come and work. Um, and information was sent out, Brooke did that for us at all, so they both that aren't here, they'll only have to do that day or so, and I get to come, of course. Um, some of the concerns we brought up as well were construction, timeline issues, have been able to talk about, looking at calendar, will that be affected, career academy, exactly how that's gonna go moving forward. And then our last meeting goes on July 28th. We talked about the positive of having four interventionists at the elementary full-time, two at each site, which is gonna be great, um, also planned new teacher workshop, EMDGF is gonna provide lunch tomorrow for new staff, will they have their workshop as well, kind of welcome to them as well. Um, still talking about construction, lunch from the Big London site, issues, is it gonna be ready, that type of thing, teach SLT team, so there's your team from high school and elements who met, to try to come up with solutions for those who think it's great, and we trust everything works like we had planned. Um, talked about how will the late starts when someone be structured, just scheduling photo things, not that we're trying to having them, but just so we're ahead of the schedule, and then the exciting that we have the victims who signed up for the first academy, for the first try. So nothing huge, um, but really have appreciated the strength that and Brooke has been there as well to just open dialogue, continuous communication, but we think continue that moving forward.
Thank you.
I will print this, when I can get the copy of it.
Alright, and, um, Sam Miller, you can go ahead here, let me hit my weapon here, you have five minutes.
Alright.
Welcome, thank you for coming.
Hi, thanks for having me, my name is Dr. Ken Miller, I'm not a medical doctor, but I have a PhD ethics. Um, what I wanna talk about is like for you all to revisit the mask question, I know this is big contentious, and I thank you for your thoughts on it, um, and your work on the question, but I'd like to revisit it for a few reasons. One, um, I think there's been major changes since the decision was made, both with the rise of the Delta variant, which is, I think, concerning across the board, and, um, all the sources that we initially cited, right, CDC, more head department, Minnesota Department of Health, Minnesota Department of Education, have all said mask mandates are the best way to go, universal mask mandate, so I think those two pieces alone bring us to a spot where maybe we should reconsider the district's position. I think too, uh, I used to work at Concordia when I was on the plans last year for return to learn, we faced legal liability questions with outbreaks in communities, right, so one thing masks do, they provide health, possibly to kids, if you think so, I can do, but they also provide legal protection, right, so if the district were to be sued for having an COVID outbreak, the mask can say, we did everything that the CDC recommended, whereas if you don't have any mitigation matters, right, like you're in a less strong legal position, so I think there's the legal reasons for the, the district to reconsider the issue. And then, um, third, I think there's been good evidence from other schools, right, so Arkansas opened last year, last week with Marion County without a mask mandate, the first week they had 43 infections of COVID-19 because they didn't have a mask mandate, they had 900 students who had to quarantine, right? And I think we all know and we all agree that having students on campus is far better than not having them on campus, and having in-person learning, and I think this strikes me as the most important issue in some ways. The superintendent from Marion County said, at our speedstead mask, we only had to quarantine 43 educational students, efficient to 43 who are ill, right? So you have, if we're concerned about keeping students in person, which I am, I think masks and social distancing matter. Um, so those are the points where I think we need to reconsider. I also have just a personal kind of question and plea, our youngest, or middle son has autoimmune diseases, and he also, you know, which means he's more susceptible to getting COVID-19, and he's gonna be more susceptible to having severe cases. His 504 from his doctor says we can make reasonable accommodations, the reasonable accommodations are a masked classroom, right? So, one question I have, would it be possible to have classrooms that have fully masked students, right? So if you don't wanna make the whole district have masks for every reasons, would it be possible to look at alternatives? One alternative would be have some masked classes, some unmasked classes, or, um, would it be possible, the Delta variant seems to surge and they go away, would it be possible to have a six-month mask mandate or till December and then reconsider? Or there's other alternatives, right? But I think it's worth engaging again, the possibility, both for my own son, but want to live, and I want him to be healthy and while and be able to be in person, it means civilization. What are the alternatives, right? The, the two alternatives that I've seen are a, having a teacher travel to our house to teach him, which is inconvenient in a lot of ways for the teacher and family, or having his class mandate mask. So, I invite you to reconsider the issue, I'd love if you did.
Yeah, it was your time. Okay. Alright, and no other, um, people listening. Alright, so, uh, let's move on to the middle school report. Stephanie, the child? Or are we doing that?
He's in charge of the handout, so once again, I don't have a big one to handle. Basically, hit the ground running, um, Kansas on board, doing a fantastic job. The biggest undertaking we had was to make sure, uh, classes were balanced, and also to get, you know, let's be honest, get familiar with the middle school, a little bit different than maybe what we're used to as far as the days that they use and, um, how they use them with the FIA and the choir, so. Got that, classes are balanced, we're still to this day, we get people coming to enroll, um, had some today, had some fun conversations. We've got a couple parent meetings set up for next week, um, on some other students that will, will be joining us, um, so that's gonna happen, so, I mean, let's be honest, it's gonna happen on the first day of the bus, it's gonna happen after. So, we're staying ahead of that, we're pretty happy with the progress we made, and, and, um, as a writer, our classes are a little bit pretty solid for us, so that was a, was a big piece to get up. Um, let's see, anyone send handwriting? Uh, we're gonna do some other issues too, without any locker rooms, kinda gear out for the fact of with our volleyball and with our football, as far as the after-school, the storage of their equipment, things like that, um, we're gonna have some stinky hallways upstairs, we've got no other, we're gonna be flexible, and the coaches are gonna know that, um, and the kids, and we'll make it work, it's not ideal, but we're gonna work with that, that problem. It's, um, not a game changer, it's just kind of a nuisance, but, but we're gonna make that work, and it'll be for, for one year, um, as far as the storage, when they move over here, they'll have their locker room, their locker room back, and things will kinda take care of themselves. Construction, uh, I don't know how much Shannon will talk about, but it's flexible, obviously we're, we're under a heavy construction zone, however, all indications at the middle school level is we should have all of our classrooms ready to roll by the start of school, if not, some should be turned over by the start of workshop, so that is a great means for the middle school. Things can change, hopefully they don't, but there shouldn't be any disruptions as far as that's concerned on the second floor. And the last thing, talking with Kent, is, you know, trying to make a, a commitment with, obviously both of us would be new upstairs, we're trying to stay ahead of things, um, we're learning some things as we go, it's a little bit tougher, um, there's some staff members that we're not familiar with, some new hires that we have yet to meet, we will handle that, um, and making sure that we're, um, have everyone in the right spot, but communication's gonna be a, a big priority, we're looking at drafting something, um, possibly next week, and it, it'll be a little bit generic in nature as things are, I don't wanna put all this on the this is exactly how it's gonna go, as things are gonna change as we enter the start of our school year, but some generic, and we can pump on a weekly basis, just to let them know and keep in touch with the families out there, what we've got going on, and we think it's gonna be, um, a pretty successful year, we've got high hopes, and we'll, uh, we'll get it nailed down, so, good hands if we can put Kent upstairs, he's doing a great job, I've gotta say that, I'm a baby, I'm hungry to say that, so, but it is, we're doing now, we're getting things done, and it's optimistic, we're gonna be great here.
Alright, Mr. LaPard, or the high school reporter?
Kent, the handouts for me, so, you all have the staff, dude, but.
Which one do you wanna start with?
I'm, I'm gonna start with the course guide, which is in the top of your pile. So the highlights essentially in there, uh, three things to start with. English, uh, Morgan Patro is the new English teacher, um, she, we needed another elective in that department, she's, uh, come up with a class called Fables, Mythology and Legends, and so, that'll give her 10 to 12 graders as an elective. Uh, World Languages, um, Jardine Fitzgerald Roberts, our Spanish teacher, also has a German background, so she didn't have to teach, uh, we, we didn't need the Spanish 3 this year, we didn't have the interest, so I had her in front of the class, and she's gonna do a new teacher German class.
And I guess we're starting over on anything?
Yes.
That'll be one semester, one semester, or the whole year?
Whole year. And then ECH, that we started that last year, and that's on Eve being electronic, but it's online college in the high school, meaning M State. You take classes at M State on-site, but last year they offered this version, which is where, basically it's take those same classes, but at your own high school version, okay? So, uh, reason I say that is, um, so we have Morgan as a new staff, a teacher, teacher, um, and another person that I don't, I think is gonna be talked about, but, um, Kathy Martin has asked to come back, and, um, she would be essentially teaching free period of day, college courses, which she's done in the past, not, not the other high school courses or college courses, fifth, sixth, seventh period, maybe approval on all that, but, um, it'd be M State courses, ECH version, meaning, uh, she would be on our site, uh, the same version, but she's actually on our site, not somebody from M State group, but she's a M State credential person, but she'd actually be here. So it's essentially the same type of format, but having somebody on our site. Before she ever talked to me, ECHs classes that she taught, and had about 30-plus students registered, registered for those classes, without Kathy Martin, I would anticipate at least that account, only two of us. It's exciting to have that possibility. Oh, and, uh, with, I mean, I don't know if I can even talk to Shannon about this, but this would end up being a classroom before Kathy. So we're talking about rearranging this a little bit, and we're advancing a little bit, so it might look different in the next quarter, even. Letting up the false wall right here. Um, if you go through the course guide, on the back, um, just some changes in there, Kate, uh, Kate Omen and myself, she did a lot of homework here, but we tried to go through every, um, we did go through every, uh, subject area and departments, and if you go to any one of them, he's the first one here, Family, Consumer, Science, every one of them are kinda laid out, but what they're about, um, we have the fact, a link for the, these are all online, so there's a link for the fact standards, they can click on, see those, um, you can see categories for 9, 10, 11, and 12 grades, what's required, what's electives, what are grade levels, um, what's 21st century skills for that area, that department, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity, and what types of jobs you can get in that field, so, and then each course description, that's in the department, so. Um, and if you look at the back page, there's two links there too, and I didn't, I didn't put it in the handbook, but just as links, and there are another couple more copies that you have in front of you. What is the career center information? Looks like this. Okay, and that's essentially the same information we used for registration this summer, for career academy, and it gives detailed information on credits that are required, how many credits are here, what are formats like as far as semesters and quarters, they have blocks different, so what it looks like and how it's different for them, what are, what are daily schedules, it looks like here, if you're a student there, and vice versa. And the times, the lunches, so, uh, the school year calendar, ours and theirs, and how they all work. Just the information there, there's another single page, that's another link on there, and that's the courses that are offered, it looks like this, it's a spreadsheet, and that's the courses that are offered by block, that's career academy.
We can answer questions?
Yep.
So these are all classes at DGF, not including the career academy, correct?
Not career academy.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And that's a lot of good bedside reading for you, all the next few days. Any questions so far, any more questions on that stuff, for, for it? It's really, the only update, updates are adding career academy information, those links, and, uh, the courses, um, the two English courses, and ECH and, uh, Spanish are German classes. So the next thing I have is handbook. Should be a page of, there are changes for you. Okay, so it's a front and half, front page and then bottom half, backside. So these, these are all the changes, or, or, uh, things that I wanted to clarify a little bit, but. So course guidebook, when you read that, that will be, so that's the heading course guidebook, and then when you say refer to the course guidebook, at the following link, so they'll get what you yourself, what we just went to. The next item is course load per semester, I wanted to clarify it because there's just different scenarios where, um, students that take two college classes, for example, they are, they are able to take a study hall. Uh, sometimes at the end of the year, students, seniors especially, wanna kinda tail off, they take less credits if they already earned their 24, that's required here, who wanna maintain three credits per semester than your 24 that's averaged six a year, high school year. Insurance is a big one, and so, I've been talking with, between this, uh, Jaden, uh, excuse me, Quinn Jager, he's at Clay County Social Services, he's the educational intellect supervisor, and, um, a year ago at this time, funding for truancy was taken up, so there wasn't any truancy backing that we could use in our schools, and that's still gonna be the case this year, so, he's, he's actually working on some things that are different levels, um, and it's just at the, at the infant stages right now, but looking for feedback, looking for data, so we'll pull some data out there that we had two years ago for attendance compared to last year, which will be exponentially worse than the year before. It's always, truancy's been pretty tough the last few five to 10 years, but it's, it was really bad last year, um, just as support for him, trying to get more funding for, for truancy support. So essentially what that becomes is we have our rules in the school for attendance, but what, at what level can we make referrals, get any support? It's really at the end of the line, pretty much, when it's a big deal, in the home, so, we're really having to deal with attendance at all our sites, with them are all at the school. Uh, so there's a few changes in the truancy, um, I'm gonna, there's, you can kinda see some highlight there in the first paragraph, uh, a student who is officially truant, absent without excuse for one or more class periods, on seven school days, up to 10, and they have to cut that out because it just isn't for truancy support. Um, and then the next one below that, the single paragraph, but upon the third unexcused absence, the student will be given to click on the truance app, so we don't have a truancy officer because of this. In the past, we had somebody come out on-site at least once a week, with Morgan and DGF, we just don't have that. Post-prom and prom, so, just wanted to clarify the rules, and I, I, we didn't have this piece in the handbook in the past, I wanted to have it in it because it's been in the post-prom guidelines, but, well, the last couple years we've had some questions about it, so I wanted to make it clear in our handbook too, so, um, putting those details in there. One of the details that we had, some concern about the past was, um, students that come from outside of DGF, and we wanna say, if you're coming to our post-prom, you need to attend our prom. Okay, we don't know what these kids are doing when they come from somewhere else and show up at our post-prom, okay? That's probably the biggest piece I wanted to pick, actually, I don't know. Uh, and then the backside to clarify, I had some questions, just last spring about honor cords, I didn't, I don't know if any of you had any questions, but I just wanna clarify this, honor medallions or honor cords at graduation, uh, they get a gold cord at 3.75 GPA, okay? 3.5 is for a silver cord. I had some questions, uh, 3.713, do they get a gold cord? No, I'm not gonna, round that, okay? And then that second paragraph, that's just, it's in there, and I missed it last, last year at this time, we don't, this is something that's happened a long time ago, I don't know how many years back, but it's something we're, we're talking about, how to recognize kids honor wise at each grade, uh, in the past, they did some kind of follow awards, and get all some type, some type of recognition, but we're gonna look at something that, to make that change. Supply list, from the, a few years ago, we had nine critters required to have daily planners, that was really tough to enforce and get them, but over to encounter those things, so we're just gonna say it's on the supply list and strongly recommended, okay? Yeah, Jason McCoy is a big deal, uh, we wrote a grant last spring, Jason McCoy is the, um, I don't know, he's the vaping and tobacco, um, expert area in the county, so he's gonna be on our site for the next five years in, uh, the office next to mine, um, he's coming in to see me on Friday morning to, to kinda get introduced and start planning for how we can use him, but he'll do some surveys of students at the middle school level, the high school level, um, take the information, how can we best support students, how can we best, uh, reduce tobacco use, vaping use, um, and kinda look at some curriculums, and we can look at, uh, a team of staff and how we can help with some things. It's exciting to have him on, on site. See, I'm sorry I'm taking this along here. Uh, career fair, uh, that's in December, tentative time, we've usually had 30-plus, uh, local business people do that, uh, maybe a potential takeoff to that would be job shadowing in the second semester, um, we'll just look more into that a little more, but I know career fair is a popular thing for the ones that do come and present, and for the students too. Music trip is a big topic, uh, so I've been meeting with, uh, music people, and, so, nothing firm, but getting close, um, uh, looking at, probably the biggest hangups right now are dates, when to do this, um, there's so, I mean, I don't know if there is ever gonna be a right answer, but, um, if it's me, I would do it over spring break, and no other kids are here, because I don't know what we're gonna do with our kids, or anything, it's always a, if they're sitting in high school, and half the high school's gone, um, that's my opinion. But I looked at our spring break dates, and it's girls', uh, state basketball, it's boys', section term basketball that week, so I don't know what. Um, if we do it between sports seasons, winter and spring, something like that, but I think that's gotta get nailed down, that big piece right there, then we can get everything else kinda rolling. Um, I've talked to the music people about not just making it a, just a Disney trip, but making it one of the learning event, they've contacted two, they've got ahold of two high schools that are in, very interested in having our, our band and choir students practice the same type of music for the same scores as they would, um, meet up at the high schools before on, on mornings, one high school one day, one high school the next day, um, they're still waiting for a response back from, uh, University of Central Florida, which will be kind of, we'll see that. Disney would offer a recording studio, uh, event where, and I know they did this last time, but it's something where the, the choir students individually going and record themselves, doing a piece of a song, the band does something like the same, and then when it's all done, all those pieces are put together in some kind of recording. Um, so hopefully in the next couple weeks that finals, I know other schools, the middle school, the visiting town here, the school too. Lunch and parking, uh, that's gonna be an evenswool thing on the Eric thing, right now, if I made, if I had to make the decision today, students, or staff would be parking out here, students would be over in the softball lot, it's that stretch. Lunches, right now, my plan is to have them on the theaters, uh, theater stage, the music hallway, and the lobby, we just don't have the cops, so, it's kinda in the plan right now, and that needs to change as we go through here, so. Alright, 20 minutes, am I done? Woo! It's the longest one, I'm sorry.
When can they end of the world if they had a parking softball field, that's what would be 95, back in the day.
I have a question to your truancy, um, so are we not reporting any truancy events here?
We report, yeah.
So we're gonna report to social services, who's that before you come to the council?
Yeah, I'd like to visit more, I've, I've had a couple task forces in my day, but the county attorneys, just as a presence.
Yep.
And also the pool officer, sitting in a room with the parents, and then we went and picked up and get it from house, and we're gonna get it, so, we'll talk more about them.
Sounds good.
That worked pretty well for us anyway, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Thank you. Alright, 6.3 fourth committee reports, I know you guys met afterwards, Amy, you called me, and so I'm so sorry, I didn't send up the email, so, Laura and Nicole, can you guys give us a little rundown on what you guys discussed after last working?
Well, I know we talked about the rental property builder, called, um, with Dan's name in there, we talked about this. Um, we hear, if we jump in, when everyone calls, we start. We talked about like the bus contracts a lot, I don't know. Nope.
Yeah, that was a good, and I can, why don't you do your thing, and I'll follow with some of those in bringing up some.
Okay, yeah, um, I guess with the bus contract that, um, Bob Keeler's going to others, um... So if there was an issue with the extracurricular status, we didn't share any of those. We can look, I think it was even the day after we met or something like that. And, um. Maybe I just need to.
No, I.
I feel like that was like the. That's all that happened in my head, I like it.
Okay.
I think we also decided that Amy was gonna be the chair.
Oh, yes, 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 Amy is.
Big news. I'll I'll just kind of follow up with Laura. We did talk about the renter. Worked on some paperwork today. He is signing a lease with somebody else and so he will be out. So that's good. We did have some plumbing issues over there unfortunately, but they were taken care of. You might know, right before we're gonna do something to the house with plumbing issues, but it's okay and he's okay. Let's give everything okay. Uh, as far as bus contracts, yes, they were they were still working on details. But it does sound like that will happen. I don't have anything for this meeting because nothing's been finalized for you guys to approve or not as far as the bus contract goes. I lean is out this week. We are going to meet with all the contractors next week to talk about the extracurricular piece. And that centers, they just don't have somebody to pick up that extracurricular. We know we need extracurricular, they're willing to help, vendors are willing to help some. So we're gonna try to work out it all together. Can they share it? Can we split it? Just to try to keep it equal, so again, that'll happen next week when I need returns.
For anybody watching, if you want to get your bus license, we would very much appreciate that. I'm working on my child that drives semi and the coach is here, he said, you know, it's just, it's a need and. I wasn't so awful at driving, I'd come in here to.
Did Keeler's have one row or? One.
One, just one.
And then, yeah, they had one row, about one, and then they also had the extracurricular part of their.
Okay, um, six point four superintendent for solid or is it instead?
All right, well, I just wanna thank, um, the EM DGF for being here. It's we have had three meetings, but I think each one was productive, I hope. Uh, and trying to set a course in a direction and so piggyback, and I know I'm adding this now, so I apologize for that. I want to say thank you first, so. And that is also for the watch and doing that to invite everybody to it and just kind of bring the district together. That's an important piece, especially beginning of the year, so I want to thank you guys for that. Appreciate it. Uh, also for the Hillers, I I just got back late last night, so I did see your email. Uh, I just didn't want to respond to it until after tonight, uh, but I appreciate that. So thank you also for being here and then kind of reiterating what you said in my in the email. Antennal lease, so this is with the city of Glendon. The tower is up on the tower, the tower is up on the tower. But, um, there's the connection piece to the school and Eileen and so that stuff's on back order. It's like everybody's sofa that you ordered three months, eighteen months ago. But, uh, the company has assured us that they have a temp, one they can bring in and hook up so we can use it. That was up until Monday. Valley City's nine one one system went down, so they had to take this temp thing that was set for us. They ran it out to Valley City, they're working on Valley City as well. Nine one one's more important than us, I guess. Anyway, um, so they're working with Valley City to fix that so that can still get connected here before school starts. We were nervous with activity starting that we're gonna be classes are running that too. So they are working diligently to hopefully get that fired up before we start. So John gave me that update before I came over. So as things were looking great on Friday, Monday, I will wait. So when the backorder stuff obviously, I'm thinking, give us a date on that, yeah, that will all be done. Any questions on that lease? That's with the city and it's five hundred dollars and if we didn't go with that, it was gonna cost us over six grand and build the towers. We got many years of, plus the signal's gonna be stronger, we have a better reach. So all those things are gonna be positive. And in the meantime, it's cheaper.
I did, I guess I, for all these years, I didn't only have to make that piece. You probably did.
We did, this is.
We did, oh, this is bad news, okay.
So when the new building, when all this, we're gonna put a big tower up and get all this stuff set up, it's gonna be almost, I don't know, maybe it was seventy-five hundred bucks or something. In any case, the city was willing to give up their tower space. We rented, it's kind of a fast practice they have with other things or other entities, so it was.
You said we have the old tower here, doesn't it?
Yeah, but right, but it's just not efficient and or as as efficient as we need to be or as strong as we need it to be, so.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be a good thing, it's just. You hookups, our pickups. A sample resolution, so this kind of goes back to, um, what the Hillers were sharing. And what is the, uh, direction of the district? This language is is from MSBA. There's been a lot of superintendents asking, how do we want to address this year? Everybody, and I had my likes country meeting today. Of the about forty superintendents were there today, probably forty-one of them are worried. In other words, everybody's worried about this year more than last year. Because of what do you do? What's right? What's wrong? What? What's, you know, right, of course, is in quotes, because there's no right answer because of who you talked to last, right? And so I get it, it's difficult. It's not a fun position. This is language from MSBA kind of guiding the board and the superintendent and how to kind of manage it with some verbiage. So you have something on the books. This. To summarize it, gives the superintendent the right to make a decision if something changes quickly. With or approval, so I would have to call Lindsey, Lindsey's the chair, we'd reach out to you guys, hey, here's what happened. Here's what we need to do, okay, we're gonna start masking every day or we're not, we're gonna take them. If there's a decision that needs to happen, this allows the superintendent to make it quick, we don't have to have a special board meeting. And so that was part of it. Now there's a lot of language in here. It addresses masks, it addresses vaccinations. And then we have to kind of pick it, how it fits for us. In my meeting today with superintendents about this resolution got brought up at the end because I showed them that this is a sample that MSBA had out. This went up August fifth. But when they sent it out, it was vague enough where since August fifth to now, things have changed a little bit. Yep, wait a week, it changes and it's just, it's so difficult. To to stay up with it, to make sure everybody's happy, this isn't gonna happen, right? So Fargo, yesterday you probably read Fargo went with mask handy. Wes Fargo didn't, Moorhead didn't. They're all making recommendations, CDC right now, it's a recommendation, MDH is still a recommendation. We talked about the governor and what the governor may or may not do. They said today, MISA reported that they were felt there was highly unlikely that the the governor would get involved in it. He did it last year and he doesn't, he just doesn't feel he needs, he wants it to be local. I appreciate that as we all do, we like that local control. And on the other hand, it makes it extremely difficult to now. Make everybody happy or to do the right thing, whatever's right. And and what we talked about today is we didn't go into this to be doctors. We didn't go into this to be nurses and make medical decisions. We went into our jobs to educate. And it's it's turning into this doctor decision or recommendation and it's getting to be very difficult. What I want you to do today is to see this, what through it, there's a lot of verbiage in there, options we have with masking, with vaccination conversation, whatnot. And then on the August twenty-third, uh, either decide we're gonna do a resolution. A lot of schools are not doing any resolution at all, they're just gonna have it in their safe learning plan to say, hey, we're masking, we're not masking, we're making that optional. We're mandating it. That's the other thing we can do in our safe learning plan, obviously, I'm gonna run that through the board. But we can have a resolution. MSBA feels that sometimes with a resolution, we talked about legality and and that type of thing. It's nice to have something that you have out there that's in writing, that you're saying you're addressing it and you're following whatever guideline, CDC, MDH, whatever. Unfortunately, in my position, I heard everything you can bring up. And I've heard it strongly on both ways, so yeah, thank you, and I don't want to kick people under the curve, I don't at all. I I just, I and I appreciate, uh, the email I got saying that I understand your position, it's not fun or easy and whatever. I do really appreciate that part. Yeah, it's it's not a perfect, it's not a fun decision, especially now, whatever decision. I'll just say it this way, that I make with you guys and if something happens, well, you know, it's. I mean, nobody wants that, and nobody wants it at all, whatever that decision, so. Anyway, I'm just gonna, I want you to read through this, please. I want us to then of course discuss it on the twenty-third.
Can I ask just one quick question?
Sure.
Because of the in-communication with our dresses.
Yep, yep, I had a sit down with both of them. Yep, yeah, I met with them early last week, I think it was that I met with them. Yeah, we talked a lot about what do they think, what are we doing? We talked about masking, we talked about vaccinations, we talked about, I'm a, I want everybody in the school all the time. My analogy to the nurses was the referendum for this building project passed fifty-two percent. We're spending forty-two million dollars, fifty-two percent said yes, guess what? You're all spending forty-two million. If we have fifty-two percent of our kids here, that's better than not, you know, and that. And it gets to be a little funky because once you get twenty-five percent of the school out, you gotta really seriously think about, all right, is that the time when we need to pull it? I will fight to the nail to keep as many kids in here as we can. Obviously, we want them to be safe, we gotta figure out what does that look like to be safe? Distancing piece, what's it look like? I visited with a couple principals today about that. What kind of space we have in terms of, you know, we gotta do our due diligence to whether we're masking, not masking, requiring, we still have to spread it out. We have to figure it out along schedule exactly. So there's a lot of work to be done in all this, but.
Just before we get off that subject.
Yeah.
Did nurses come out with some, um, guidance that Clay County's providing? Can you have that before the twenty-third?
We can.
Down and then send it out to us.
Yep.
Everything changes, like at my job every day, it's changing again. It's like we're seeing that surge again.
They are meeting, uh, they have their state nurses meetings on Wednesdays, am I right? But then I think it's Wednesday. And then they're gonna keep, they're gonna tell me if there's anything changing.
Okay.
So they will do that, they said they'll do that weekly if there's anything new or different that they heard from the nurses meeting at the state level. I think we'll share that.
Okay, that'd be great, just sometimes, you know, not, you know, it's it's easier if it's kind of circular, so we don't have to walk hunting. And seeing federal stuff, federal's a different piece than individual states, so. Okay.
Speaking of that, federal's different because that's where funding for busing comes and buses as of right now, it's required to wear a mask on the bus. There you go, that being, that's just wonderful. So which it's good, I'm not saying that's not what I meant by, you know what I mean? It's just that it's gonna be different or it's the same.
Yeah.
And it's just like, okay, federal funds does that, so then we follow that, okay, let's be consistent, but. Anyway, that just, it's not bad, it's just different, that's all I'll say, I guess. Career Academy, uh, Wayne talked about that a little bit, I met with them last week. We agreed on seven hundred dollars a student per semester. So if Lindsey takes a class, first block over there and she does it first semester and second semester, it would cost us fourteen hundred dollars. Okay, if you take obviously two classes and this year, all you can take is, uh, the morning classes. So it'd be two courses is the most you could take and you could take it first and second semester, which is all year, that would cost twenty-eight hundred dollars. Our state funding for our students is a little over eleven. And you're gonna take after classes, twenty-eight is less than half, I thought it was a good thing for us.
That seems like a good.
Yeah, and and I broke it down, I had a whole sheet for him to break it down. They did it, they did their math differently. I think they were closer to that seven fifty to eight hundred and I was, so they said, nope, that looks good. The one thing that we're gonna continuously talk about, and I said at this time, I'm not ready to make any investment, and that is capital money. I said I can't make any capital investments. We're renters, I said, we want to be renters right now until we see how this goes and then we'll move on from there. If it's a rent to own situation, now that's different because capital money, it's gonna stay in that building. It's not like we have a saw here, we don't have the new stove here, it's there. And so we're gonna make an investment, wait a second, you know? So we're gonna work through that, they are very good to work with, it's been a great conversation and I was happy with the tuition part. Construction update, um, as you guys know, there's some requests for some big additional funds, um, from all the subcontractors. I haven't heard anything from you guys. I did get the state reports from the plumbing permits that were sent back and forth from GLG to the state, talked to the state guy Zach. Then the buildings code guy Eric, talked to him, I just got that information, we sent it on, I think it was Thursday night or Friday afternoon. I printed it today, I have not had a chance to go through it, but it has all the timelines. And the reason for that, as we talked about before, is how often was the ball in GLG's court? How often was the ball in the state's court? The state, both state guys said COVID nineteen had absolutely nothing to do with the permits from the state's application. They said they have some standard times, so they did have it for sixty days. But that is what it would be even if there was no COVID, there would be, it doesn't matter, it's always sixty the first time. So that's two months. There was setback for revisions, spent time in GLT, GLG sends it back, within a day or two, they're sending it back. I have all the timelines, so now I just have to put all the numbers together. Uh, I did talk to GLG on Thursday, I met with Dan Miller, it was in my office, I talked about that specifically. We talked about a lot of the RFIs, we have a plan where they're gonna be on site more, they're gonna be with Comstock more, so we can get this thing moving forward here, so. We're looking in a better direction and we're getting the right people in front of the right things so we can go faster. I said the problem with you guys is we tell you an RFI and we ask for an RFI, you look at your plans and your plans are wrong, so now when you come back with a solution, it's still wrong. You have to put your feet on the ground to see what they're talking about because it's like engineers, they're great until you start to build it and then the engineer goes, oh, I'm sorry, I guess we can't do that. It looks good on paper, but you can't pull it out. That's kind of what's happening, so. That's gonna get better and we have a meeting tomorrow and now we can.
It was, uh, represented to us that it was a COVID related issue, am I remembering that correctly while we were?
Yeah, according to the state people, it didn't affect their timeline. So. Uh, last, oh, vehicles I had on there, uh, we did, we have them up for bids, we have no bids at this time, so it's still an opportunity. Or a pickup on a suburban. We have till Friday, so the bids are open till Friday. At that time, we might will contact a salvage company and see what we can get out of them and they can get out of here. The insurance guy, I'm meeting with Friday and we're gonna finalize so much credit, they're gonna give us back, it sounds like we get six months of credit on our insurance, so. I'm gonna work for a year. Cause we know they've been sitting every year, so it's like, come on. Uh, we like Spentria to talk about, and that was a lot about the restart stuff, so I don't need to reiterate that. Questions?
Since you're on transportation, you have a talk about transportation to the career academy?
I mean, and I have talked about it, uh, but it's used to be in this contractor meeting because I did some math on it and I didn't like the math. Uh, especially when you talk about a shuttle to Delaware from Glendon, oh, here's what that costs, I said. That won't work. So it's gonna be a negotiation for sure with the contractors because it's gonna just be too much. We're also gonna talk, uh, they've talked with us about our kids staying, let's say Lindsey again, she's taking first period. First block, I should say, but not second block, would she stay there? Yes, if she's taking some online college maybe or a PSEO, but if she's not, we can't have her missing two classes back here, so now we gotta run and get her. Every time we run and get somebody. It's a consult, can we do it with Suburbans? Yep, we could, cause it's a smaller amount. Do we have a driver available? And that's what I mean and I are gonna work through, so maybe we can just get out of the contractor part and just use our own type three drivers. That's what we're hoping for.
Are we allowed to conduct themselves?
We are, there's a labor already that I think, yeah, so that's gonna cut it down too, so hopefully we do a suburban right away. The problem with Suburbans is they're all booked all morning, so anyway. Yeah, cause this one, we're not gonna fix the one over, no, no, we're. Yeah, well, hey, we're, we're, nobody's bidding on this one at least do yet and that's what I'm gonna work on that, so I'm kind of into use car dealership now.
All right, so we had to, you all know that, um, the additional costs last week, more of the LG and Comstock, are we going to just add that back on the twenty-third after we?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Is it, or do we need to add that in tonight?
Okay, so I'm glad, I'm sorry I didn't elaborate on that, so thank you, Vincent, for bringing that up, so. GLG, if you remember, Matt and Lee were here last time, they talked about it. Met with both of them, Lee and GLG has asked, or they went through everything that Comstock shared. Everything made sense as far as the material change. as far as the material change cost, that was, agreed with that. What we did next, or Comstock did next, Matt, I just talked to Matt at about four, maybe closer to five o'clock today, he's got all the dates and times of when they bid, when they got the official permit to move forward, this was our problem, the permits were not given in this timely fashion, or the state hadn't approved it, so the people that were subcontractors couldn't order anything yet, because they didn't know if they could or not, it wasn't approved yet, so by the time they could, I have all those timelines from Matt, again, just got them before we came over, so I haven't been able to look through the dates and times exactly yet, but according to what I saw quick in my short conversation with Matt, the subcontractors didn't have a lot of choice, that was the new price, and they couldn't bid it before that, so Matt said, I'm just gonna say, Shannon, you can look through them, obviously you need to, but based on what I see, it's, it's something, you know, that they didn't have a lot of control, they ask him every day, they had their meeting today again, all of them together, so here's a lot today, um, what I told them is this, I haven't had a chance, you guys haven't really had a chance, I just got this information from the state, if you notice on my weekly update, update to last week, we wanted to do a walkthrough on the 23rd, I would prefer if we could do it before the meeting, so then we could make an educated decision at the meeting. I told them, I'm sorry, the subcontractors, I feel bad, but I really don't feel we're equipped to do it again tonight, unless you guys are, that's up to you guys, but we could wait till our walkthrough next, our next board meeting on the 23rd, uh, that way you're walking around, and you can hear all of it, you can feel it a little bit better, and your feet are on the ground also.
I'm just gonna throw this out there, because the 23rd is back to school night, correct?
High school.
So, but, yeah, middle school and high school, I don't know, is anybody opposed to seeing if they can move it up to, like, next, yeah, like next week, would they, would you announce them?
Yeah, I think they will.
When you see them on the 12th, and, you know, Monday nights are kind of board nights, I mean, I believe that going on, Ronnie, when you vote.
We're talking just for the walkthrough?
Just for the walkthrough, so we can, next Monday is 16th, see if they're available.
I work.
You work, are you working, or are you working on every, every name this week?
Friday's and Monday, so. For the next Wednesday, I'm gonna leave, so.
So if you, you're trusting our judgment?
If, Nicole, you wanna set up something with me, I can come over, we can, I can walk you through with Dennis there, I can walk you through with Travis here, just so you see stuff, if you want.
That should work. Uh, if you want to check with them, I'm assuming that they like work or something.
Yeah, what time for you guys?
I don't know, 3:30, you're done at 4:50, you have?
Yeah. Should I just shoot for, what, what time, what do you guys want me to shoot for? Okay, six?
So see if they can, I'm just thinking, if we have to approve costs, and we have to tie, so we need to have time to, like, process, you need to look at the numbers, we need to process it, and then we look on Monday and make a decision.
I agree.
I don't understand the whole process when somebody or a contractor bids, they don't order materials right?
After, I know what you're saying, like, once they bid it.
Yeah.
And they give the bid, and they know what it was for, did they order, don't they order pretty close to when they accept with it, or is it when the project starts?
What are these numbers, are they like, retail, the retail, or the price that he would have paid any difference, or, you know, this kind of thing?
Yep, this is why, and I've asked a lot of those questions, I think that's why I want you guys to walk with Matt and Lee, and just drill them with your questions, because they have the, they have stuff here, and they have documentation, and I'll share this other timelines, and, well, you saw this, the material costing basis, remember that, and so he has known some timelines, I have some state timelines, I can get all that to you, I'll just scan and email it to you guys, you can start, it's fun reading, uh, but, and, and just some of the timelines, because GLG, remember, is not in this. Okay, and so, they're, they're part of this deal, remember, Lee said that worst case, they're gonna be 190,000, but it's not gonna be 190,000, I sat with Dan in my office, I said, no way, and, so he knows that, I shared my opinion, we're gonna work with them, but I think that's the group, because this, you're right, Ronnie, when they bid it, based on the package, and based on the drawings, and based on everything, they bid it, right? Well then, now the permits didn't get done, and now they're sitting there, and by the time they got, okay, now Lindsay, you can go ahead and you're gonna do it now, or now we're, now it's, we're approved, now she sends in, okay, now I'm gonna order my stuff, that's where the price changed, from when they did it to there, they couldn't get it, you know, there's some that did in that phase one, there's, so, there's a lot of moving parts in it, it is. I'm gonna sell these vehicles.
I have more issues with that than that, my issues.
For sure. So do I.
I hope I said, like, people who were not down to this stuff before they were, were.
Couldn't agree more, Ronnie, and that was a part of my conversation with the architects, was flat measured wrong.
So I guess, somehow somebody, they just gotta have some scheme that we do, I don't know if it's Comstock or GLG.
Well, that, that's the architect, Comstock was the ones that discovered it, so, it's, that's an architect issue, they didn't measure right.
But there was one time when they permitted things too, or something, that they basically said Comstock or somebody overhoped something, that they didn't get, something set off in time, remember that?
Well, I've had a lot of conversations with both, Ronnie, and you know how this goes, right? It's Ronnie's fault, Ronnie says, no, it's Shannon's fault, and so, there's a little bit of that, where GLG said Comstock should have known the sound and picked it up sooner, Comstock said, we're not the architects, that's your job, we're, our job's to put it together, here's Lucille, from, doesn't fit, so.
So, Nicole, so I think we can be there, um, to totally understand, but if you have any questions, then you can mail Shannon, and I should ask a little bit, please.
And you wanna walk around, just something.
Bring your helmets, I presume?
Yep, bring your helmets, everybody, bring your helmets, right, I'll send over texts, everybody, bring your helmets. Um, and then Brooke, can you just make a note, then, on the 23rd, we'll go ahead, and we'll, um, we should, at that time, do that report and request, um, for both GLG and Comstock, so we're done on the 23rd.
Yeah, and, and just to be honest with the analogy, I don't know if GLG will still be ready.
Okay.
But, but, but the subcontractors is really what this is about, even Comstock's willing to work with us and not get something maybe necessarily, but all these subcontractors have done the work.
Yeah.
And it's kinda like, yeah, they, they gotta, they, they need to get paid, and I think we need to get them paid, so.
So however you, and we're coordinated up, let's get that done on the 23rd, so.
Yep, I agree.
Okay.
So we still got a budget leaving after the 23rd, then, scheduled?
I think we should, yeah, well, I know we do, because we have other budgets, things to talk about too.
All right.
Yep.
Great, so, let me just make this.
A little walkthrough, moving on to 23rd.
No, we're, when Shannon has his Friday update with us, he'll have an answer if that's gonna work or not, and if it's not.
That's what my goal may, for sure.
Yep, please let me know, and I can message the group here and see if it works, so.
And I'll just send it on that weekly update this Friday, so.
That'd be great, thank you, all right, any more questions for Shannon?
Sorry, I went longer than wait.
Oh, no. We're fine, lots of stuff happening, so, we're moving on, it's approval of minutes, we have 7.1, this is the regular meeting on July 26th, um, do we have a motion with?
The move.
Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Laura, all those in here, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, consent agenda, claims and accounts, Laura.
173,506 dollars and 45 cents.
All right, we also are approving the donation from United Way for school supplies for students, we have the resignation of Mackenzie, Mackenzie Binji, the sorting effect of August 18th, uh, reservation of Bradley, Brad, Brady Billik, per professional in the last school year, approve the reservation of Jessica Taskford, elementary teacher at the college town, approve the reservation of Tina Fox, per professional effective the end of, effective the end of the 2020, 2021 school year, is there a motion?
So.
Motion by Paul, is there a second? Second by David, any questions or discussion?
We don't need some further examples. I'm not the biggest, will we get credit back from all the contractors, I see Lewis and Glenn this time? Anybody know about speed adjustments or anything?
No, that's why I have this meeting tomorrow, I'm hoping to get some clarification.
I mean, it's small homes.
Yeah, they're all very small, yeah.
All of them have, like, rent, credit something through.
Yeah, yeah. Joe was getting there, we, we are working on replacement, uh, Joe worked his magic today, and I think we're gonna hopefully wrap this up, August 23rd, you'll be approving somebody, we're hoping, uh, we're working with somebody right now, so we met with that person today, so. We hope.
All right, any more questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, 6-0. All right, 9.1, this is bid approval, um, this is for the sale of the DGO rental, um, rental house located in Delaware, the bids are open from August 12th to August 27th, uh, the home must be moved by November 24th, 2021, I'm assuming the bids go through the district office.
Yep.
Okay, do we have a motion?
A move.
Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Laura, any questions or discussion?
I'm suing since I remember coming before, then we're not having a party on, so.
Yeah, we won't be able to, well, it's highly unlikely that we can do anything even gravel this year, we're just, if somebody's gonna bid on it, we gotta give them time, if nobody bids on it by August 27th, then, okay, now we don't have to worry about the moving by November, we're just gonna tear it down, push it in, haul it away, whatever, and we can maybe get something going, and that's this next part, I need to go, I need to do a little chatting with contractors to see if I get somebody to do that, but in the meantime, we gotta, I want it up for bids, because if somebody wants it, which I don't think it is, but I think that's a great thing to do with a public facility, you have to put it up for bid, you have to do that due diligence, this is it. I'll get a time, we'll figure somebody out to come and haul it away, tear it away, whatever, I think that's some local law enforcement might, might wanna do some SWAT training in there, there's a little, I've heard some of that talk, which is fantastic, hope we can do that, the firemen can't burn it, and so that would've been better yet, but then it's too close to school, I'm, anyway, uh, we're working on that, too, Lance.
All right, awesome, sounds great, all right, any more further questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries, 6-0. Committee updates, um, this is to Lee, um, approved the board committee updates is presented, we've looked at these several times, um, everybody still has, they're nice color-coded, that we're making press, so, um, and then the changing of the committees, which I believe is interpracted tonight, and there's, there's not very, there's not very many, so it really shouldn't affect anybody too much.
If you recall, uh, I think it was in our budget meeting, that we talked about, Edie would not be in the one, and we both.
She's, she's not gonna do.
Cause she's already in.
Yep, she's not gonna do personnel.
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah.
So now it'll be, um, myself, David, and then Laura will be joining us on that, so.
And the facility says transportation as well, correct?
Yep, facility slash transportation will be Laura, Edie, and Nicole, so, all right, and then we will do our reorganization in January as well, so, moving forward, we will go with these, um, committees in Florida on contract, so, do we have a motion to approve? So, I think I got Brittany first, who's the second, is it gonna be Ronnie?
Yeah.
Ronnie, okay, any further discussion or questions, team? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.3, this is, um, policy, policy will be meeting tonight, I know that this, um, group of individuals has had a chance to review the first, as we know with policies, we always do two readings to get these in place before school starts, we're gonna be approving them, um, the first set tonight, most of these changes on, uh, all these policies are pretty much related to MSBA, we're changing and taking Superintendent Tyson's name off, and creating Superintendent Hampstead's name off, so I don't anticipate a lot of different, um, adjustments, the only one we need to be the 9.05, the fundraisers and concessions, I think Tracy's gonna join you guys afterwards and discuss, um, this after the policy meeting tonight, so, Brittany, Nicole, um, and Shannon will meet with Tracy, and then you guys can send us an update on how you guys want proceed, so, do we have a motion to approve?
So.
Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Paul, um, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, contract here, um, 10.1, um, so the, uh, motion, or a motion for an FY22 contract, um, with Kathy Martin, high school post teacher, affecting the start of the 2021, 22 school year, as Mr. Looker stated, she'd be coming back to teach three college courses for students.
So is this a .5 contract?
It is, it's a, it's a, it's a .5 contract, yeah.
Make a call, one.
Here, if she'll teach the college over classes, uh, three classes of the episodes, I think, it's a .5.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So.
Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Laura, any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Yeah, very good person, that's spoken. All right, 10.2, this is a non-certified contract for Donna Brassa, her professional, effective the start of the 21, 22 school years, our motion. Yeah, Laura, second, any questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 10.3, this is non-certified contract for Angie Clemmison, her professional, effective the start of the 21, 22 school year, is there a motion? So, motion by Paul, is there a second? Second by Laura. Questions or discussion?
We're getting closer, we're getting much closer, I talked to Mary Ann today, and we're getting closer.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, all right, um, next board meeting, we'll have on Monday, August 23rd, that'll be 6:00 p.m. here in the High School Media Center, for someone to pull up, everybody knows they're back to school night too, so, um, there's gonna be a lot of motion in the school buildings, uh, budget committee, committee meeting will meet following the conclusion of the Monday, August 23rd, um, please review that, uh, resolution that Shannon gave us, and we'll have discussion on that, uh, at the next school board meeting, um, policy will have a five-minute break here, and then you guys can, um, meet, and then we'll wait for Shannon to let us know about that Sunday night, and, uh, about meeting with, um, three more, so, anything else, Kim, would you have? Thank you, Laura, okay. All right, there we go, we can see meeting adjourned, some of them, thank you. I know people turn out, yeah, thank you.
Correct.